February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. This time is six forty five P M. Liam, would you please call the roll?
Member Wyatt?
Here.
Member Owens?
Here.
Member Kleister? Member Stroya?
Here.
Member Warren? Member Athene?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Black President.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll begin the public comment portion of the agenda. Our first topic is ordinance seventeen twenty twenty five. Liam, would you please read the title for the record?
An ordinance authorizing the city of North Canton to enter the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council and approving the execution and delivery of the agreement, establishing NOPEC and approving NOPEC bylaws for the purpose of establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program within the city and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, so repeat of our three o'clock meeting here. This is the authorization version of the ordinance. And if NOPEC would like to make some comments here.
Oh, thank you. Want to come with me for that?
No.
Good to see you, Council President, again.
Good seeing you.
And good evening to the council here tonight. Ross McDonald, Director of Community Expansion for NOPEC, the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. About five or so weeks ago, I was here and gave a presentation to the council regarding some of the membership benefits and what it means to be a NOPEC member community. At that meeting, we discussed some of the hallmarks of our aggregation, that being our NOPEC energized community grants that we provide back to our communities. I discussed our pace lending, which is a huge benefit and a resource for your local businesses. We are, we have some federal government money that we have secured, and it doesn't leave NOPEC at this point, that we are able to do lending for local businesses and the city itself, if that were something that were of interest. I know in talking to the Director of Finance, that is something that may be of interest for future projects for her. We also, our three, what drives us are these three items here: advocacy, education, and aggregation. So when we talk about advocacy, NOPEC is watching what is happening down at the P U C O. And anything that we perceive to be a detriment to ratepayers, we're going to speak against those kind of items. The P U C O is a body, you know, not too different than like the city council, but they're hearing from the utility that may want to add different fees to ratepayers' bills. And NOPEC is out there defending the ratepayer in that scenario. We also do public education at the community level. We have outreach, an outreach team that would be present at, say, the senior center here in the city. Any community events that you may be happening, having over the summertime especially, we're very interested in attending those events. We also sponsor, good evening, Councilwoman, we also sponsor community events typically between five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars per event. So that is also something that the city would enjoy as a member. You know, deregulation happened in the year two thousand. NOPEC was established the same year. And we have been doing, and when I say deregulation, that's of the energy market in Ohio. Prior to that time, you had to pay the utility price straight with your utility. So, you know, when you become a NOPEC member, all of those residents that are in your current aggregation program will seamlessly roll right into the NOPEC aggregation. We are also looking out for anybody that maybe was not in your current program, that may be sitting on the utility, and we will pull them in as well. We are able to educate folks about the apples-to-apples shopping and some of the things you need to watch out for when you're shopping on the apples-to-apples website. I think, and if anybody needs explanation on what that is, I can go into further detail. But we're here to advocate for the community itself and for ratepayers to ensure that they're do, that we're able to give them all the information to save money on their utility bills at the end of the day. So I'm happy to entertain questions from the public or from the council at this time.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance seventeen twenty twenty five?
I'd like to say something, if I may, President Stroy. Ross, thanks for the presentation from NOPEC. Over the last few times that you've presented, these are some of the takeaways I've, I see by NOPEC for us. Sounds like, again, it doesn't sound like you have the ability to secure lower electricity rates for our city customers and consumers. Leveraging collective buying power. I understand that from you.
Very much.
More sustainable energy options are available that you research. Access to renewable energy would be part of that?
Absolutely, sir.
I think you just mentioned simplifying a buying process to a certain degree. I think also what I understood over these last few sessions, offering opportunity to negotiate better deals with energy suppliers, as you are still continuing to do that.
Exactly.
Due to the larger customer base created through aggregation.
That's right.
And does that apply to the other two hundred-plus communities that help you look for lower rates?
Yeah, so when you, when an entity joins NOPEC, they, they are joining one aggregation. So we're all on the same team when we join NOPEC.
Okay.
And so on the electric side of things, we have about six hundred thousand accounts within the aggregation.
Okay.
So we also go to, through an R F P process in selecting our supplier. That is something that is coming up in the next year, that we will go back out to that R F P process. Our current supplier, Nextera Energy, is the largest utility in the United States. They happen to be the leader in renewable energy and sustainability. However, you know, they're really looking at the realities of the current electric market, and it's about meeting demand right now. More than, more than focusing on renewable energy and things like that, those are important, but now it's about meeting demand. And so they are really leading in terms of finding ways to meet our electricity demand. They care very much about NOPEC and its success. And so when you're partnered with an entity that is a leader in the industry and cares about NOPEC, that's a benefit to all of our communities. I had a chance to meet the folks that are purchasing the energy for our aggregation, not but just two weeks ago. And these are very dedicated folks that really, really do want to see the best prices for the NOPEC aggregation.
The last thing, it was, I think you've also talked about customers and consumers still have an option to either opt out. Or again, they can choose their own electricity provider. That's still an option.
Absolutely. So just because a community joins NOPEC, it does not strip you of your, of your choices as a consumer. You are still free to either opt out of the aggregation and go on the apples-to-apples website. That comes with caution, of course, to make sure that you're aware of what you're signing onto. Some of these things have fees that you need to be aware of. So while the kilowatt hour might be a really low number or a lower number, you need to really look and factor in those extended, those extra costs. NOPEC is, has no fees to leave if you're a ratepayer, no early termination, things like that. So we are a very simple solution with a lot of benefits for communities when they're looking at going with an aggregation program.
It sounds to me that it's a very safe move for the city.
I think so.
I was at a recent mayor's and manager's meeting, and one of the topics that was brought up was energy in Ohio. And how Ohio will be facing an energy, maybe crisis isn't the word, but in the next six years, because so many tech companies now are relocating for, in Ohio, and Ohio will have a challenge when it comes to providing energy.
Right.
Especially electric energy.
Yep.
To, to our, our state. And it sounds to me like NOPEC would be a safe option at this time to proceed, but also we have more to, to think about.
Absolutely. I think one thing that's great, even though you, you join NOPEC, you become one entity. You're not stripped of your personal, I guess, community sovereignty, so to speak. You're going to have representation at the General Assembly. And eventually, as we continue to grow and expand here in Stark County, there will be an avenue by which there would be a representative from Stark County on the NOPEC board. So that's, I, I guess I, there was a question that was brought up earlier about, well, what if you see your supplier going in a direction that maybe certain entities or certain communities don't like? You still have that voice at the table during the General Assembly to let your pleasure or displeasure known or your priorities known through our annual General Assembly, which is the Tuesday after the general election in November. So that would be, I guess, the second Tuesday after the second Monday in November. So I'm sure the council folks that are up for reelection this year know exactly when that election is. I'm former Board of Elections Director, so I knew the world very well. I was the director at the Lake County Board of Elections for about nine years. So I know you all had your filing deadline just now. I know you're looking to see who else filed. Never forget that just because they filed, you got to wait till they're certified. So just wait until, see who's actually certified. But yes, Mayor, I think you hit it, you know, right on the nail on the head in terms of Ohio's future and the, and the fact that a lot of people are moving into Ohio businesses, data centers. And data centers are a huge draw on the infrastructure for energy. You perform a simple, like an A I search versus just a Google search, and the amount of consumption between those two is amazing. I'm not going to, I, I won't be able to get those numbers right, but just trust me when I say, everybody using Chat G T P or G P T, they're pulling a lot of energy to perform that, that search or that query. So.
One last comment, not to put you on the spot, but if you have a crystal ball and you're going to shake that up and see where everything sells. I think we were coming out of a four-year agreement. Where do you see new agreements going in the market for longevity?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask my colleague Brenda. She's really an expert in this, but I can tell you that we've seen everywhere from eight-three to like eight-nine is what we're seeing new fixed terms going for. And I'll, I'm going to turn the podium over to Brenda Fargo, who is my colleague and has been doing this a lot longer than I have as an expert.
Not so much on that. When it comes to agreements, are you thinking two-year agreements, three-year agreements, or something in a monthly range?
Yeah. I, go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you.
What, what we're seeing is, all right, not to get too much into the weeds.
Please don't.
Rates are going up June one. They're going up, and you've probably heard that, and they're going to be up for the year, meaning June one to May thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Based upon the capacity market that's locked in, nothing we can do about it. It's not just Ohio. Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, it's all over. So we're all going to see this increase June one. So what the guidance is right now is we're not doing anything long-term because there's a lot of work being done on the federal level to try and bring the capacity market back down. It went up eight hundred percent at the last auction. So there's a lot of rulemaking that's being looked at to try and bring that back down. So we're not seeing anyone really going more than twelve months because the world could be, could be very different in June first, twenty twenty six. So that's one of the reasons that NOPEC does not lock our price in for a full three years because we don't want to be on the, the, up here and then the rates go back down.
Well, you more than answered my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I think I heard you say eight point nine cents.
As, as a high quote that we're seeing out for twelve-month fix.
That is, I did.
Yes, sir.
And I find that to be an amazing rate. I live in Congo Falls. I have a lot of interest down here.
Okay.
Very plugged in down here, do a lot of activities down here, et cetera. I'm employed here. Congo Falls has its own cooperative.
Yep.
Ten cents, ten point three cents. Plus, you know, the service fee every month. That's crazy. Yeah, so eight point nine.
Yeah.
That's, that's a deal and a half because I think, I think I saw two First Energies like open in the mall.
That's be the utility price, yeah. And, and that's the tough part is if a community has not passed aggregation at the ballot, then they're not really able to get the aggregation programs like the city of North Canton can. So that's also part of our job is to help provide that education when folks are from different communities and hearing all these different numbers. We say, okay, has your community aggregated and gone through the ballot process yet? And often, like in his case, they have not. So I think that's another thing where North Canton can be a leader in the area to talk to those communities about the benefits of aggregation and just the things, and then, of course, it's my job to talk about the benefits of being a NOPEC member. But I think we're excited for you all to see this. If you decide to go our direction, we would, you know, greatly encourage you to because we think it's right for the community. But at the end of the day, the, the voters put you in your seats and that responsibility lies with you to make that decision. I'm here and Brenda's here to answer any last-minute questions that you may have before taking up this important vote.
I would, I would also suggest that if during the opt-out process, because you're going to be going from five cents essentially to eight and a half, close to nine cents. Your folks are going to see that and, yeah, have sticker shock. It's happening to everybody, so you won't be the only ones. But if during the opt-out process, you feel that it would be beneficial to have a public meeting and let people come in and, you know, right, I mean, you know, it is what it is. But if you want to have some kind of a meeting like that, we are more than happy to come and facilitate that and talk to people, look at their bills, help them understand. You know, you're, you're all going through it, and we just need to tell our friends, family, neighbors, prices are going up and there's nothing we can do about it. And you're trying to mitigate that by keeping them as low as possible.
And, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Final opportunity for anyone to speak. And this will appear on tonight's council agenda. Liam, could you please read the title of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty five?
An ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance of the NOPEC electricity aggregation program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electricity aggregation program and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, so this is for the governance part, if you'd like to give a recap.
Yeah, I can give you a quick summary. So the second ordinance is relating to our plan of operation and governance. That's a state-required mandate that any aggregator have this plan of operation. So essentially, think of it like you, I believe the city probably has a master plan. So it's basically our master plan as an aggregation. It's a publicly available, available document that folks are free to look at and review. But we would urge councils adoption of that as well.
Any comments?
Well, just one question. So we start, say we pass it and we sign, the first year will only be one year. Then we'll have in June of twenty twenty six, we'll come out with a
New pricing.
Yep.
A new process and we could opt out or anytime.
Yep. As a part of joining NOPEC, there are clear procedures on how to withdraw from the aggregation if that were something that were desired by the council. That is, like I said, spelled out on how to, to leave. But in June twenty twenty six, we'll start the next three-year aggregation term at that time. So we're in the last year of a three-year term. Electricity, correct me if I'm wrong, Brenda, is a three-year term and natural gas is a two-year term. So I know you had brought up, I believe, earlier about natural gas. I know that the city of North Canton is up for natural gas next year. But we would be glad to have that discussion when the time is right, if there's a desire.
Like I, like I talked to you and that, Council, I was somewhat on the fence post of this with the election coming out. And you know how voters are sometimes. And it is going to cost them more, okay, for their electricity. It's not going to go down. So possibly, maybe we should have them out and have some type of public meeting before the election. I think that would help us along the way with, because they're going to say, yeah, we're going to stay here, but lose here. You know how they, they think they're, they, they think they're educated and stuff, but really, we have to do the educating.
I think it's a good idea, any, anytime you can give education.
Right.
To the public, especially when it's out of our control like this, it would be, we should capitalize on that.
If I can give you an example, I was at Walmart today, and one of those N R G people stopped me, and they were saying, you got great rates. I don't know, let me hear what that rate is. I know. So I said, what's your rate? And he said, seven point five. I said, that's a really good rate. What's the term? You get that forever. As long as you are with N R G, that's your rate forever. But really, I thought, that's shocking. He says, yep, as long as you're our customer, and we give you gift cards back when you use so much. You get a fifty-dollar gift card out of mail. Wow, this sounds great. Said, can I see the term, the term sheet? Ah, and he has a laptop thingy, and he comes up and he says, and I looked at it, went, it says fixed for three months. It's an introductory rate. What happens after that? Ah, I don't know, but I can tell you, we are always below the national average. I'm like, okay, well, why you figures into that national average?
Oh, I, yeah, right, sure.
And they're at like fifteen cents or higher. So be careful. That's the main thing we need to get across to people.
Yep.
Is there are lots of things out there that are gotchas. And that's why aggregation and NOPEC in specific is so helpful for your folks because it's a safe place. They're not going to get that gotcha.
We, we had a speaker in the afternoon, and she was, had an energy background.
Yeah, yeah.
Quite, quite educated, and she's all for it, and she's from Oregon too. And she really did her homework and she's.
Yeah, she, you know, she did have a lot of positive things to say about the, the stability of NOPEC and how we operate. From a, I guess, an ethical standpoint as well, we're, there's no tricks up our sleeves, you know. That's, at the end of the day, there's no tricks, there's no fine print, there's no, you know, watch out for this or watch out for that. The rate you see is the rate you get.
Any other comments here? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty five? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of eighteen twenty twenty five? And last call? So this will appear on tonight's agenda. Okay, so we'll take a short break before we, after we return here and Stephanie, we're entered at what time did you want to?
It does.
It does. I now call an order to the city council meeting of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. The time is seven thirteen P M.
Bring prayer, mayor.
Yes, thank you. Would you please rise and stand. Folks, we invoke a blessing upon this meeting and on people of goodwill everywhere. May we prove ourselves worthy citizens, given to service and steadfast in faith. May we be faithful in these ideals. May we stand firm when the fight is hard. May we have strength sufficient for this day and may we be as big as our problems and bigger than our responsibilities. May we live up to our capabilities. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks.
All right, Liam, would you please call the law?
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Owen?
Here.
Number Cleaster? Number Shroya?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Athenee?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Six present.
True.
Motion to excuse member.
Second.
Can't repeat the prayer.
All in favor? I oppose. Kind of a motion in the second to approve as presented minutes from the February third, twenty twenty five committee of the whole and special counsel. And special counsel, the meeting's from February ten, twenty twenty five, city council and the Main Street repaving project contract award.
May I briefly interject for a second?
Yes.
The Main Street contract board of control met earlier today and gave their approval for the lowest bidder, which was North Star.
Okay. Thank you. I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no one signed up for the first public speaks, so. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance seventeen twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing the city of North Canton to enter the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council and approving the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing NOPEC and approving NOPEC bylaws for the purpose of establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program within the city and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, John, formerly rubbish, the utilities question?
We've had two public meetings. We've heard the presentation they put on about five weeks ago. Does anyone on council have any questions about this?
I don't have any questions, but I mean, I'll make some comments. I think it's, it's, it's an impressive, it's an impressive aggregate. And I think when we watch what happened to our previous gas company and how PUCO had to bail them out, I think what impresses me most about NOPEC is their stability. Because there is strength in numbers and that's, that's a huge aspect. Not to mention all the things that have been presented to us as well. So I'm strongly in favor of it.
I would add, I don't know, I've been impressed every time we've heard from them. Whenever they talk about the PACE program, which is in our master plan, so that's exciting. The community support is exciting. And then there's the fact that costs are going to rise. We know that that's happening, but this is the best thing that we can offer our community right now. So, yeah, I fully support it as well.
All right, well, that said, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance seventeen twenty twenty five under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty five?
An ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance for the NOPEC electricity aggregation program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electricity aggregation program and declaring the same to be an emergency.
John, rubbish.
Like crystal. This is basically something that PUCO, it's the legal stuff that we have to do. We've covered it and I'll just make a motion that we.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen twenty twenty five under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, if you want to leave the, read the preamble for the second version of the public speaks.
At this time, members of the public who've signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from the officials of the dais. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises.
All right, we have one speaker tonight. It's Pat Patterson. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hi, everybody. Hello. Pat Patterson, Seventeen Fifty Fourth Street, Cogge Falls. Proud North Cantonian for life. I want to talk a little bit about education tonight, not going back to school, anything like that, but educating ourselves on issues. And we talked about that with NOPEC tonight. But specifically, I want to talk about it with issue three. The income tax issue.
Four. Now here they changed it.
Four?
Yeah.
Three and a half.
Yeah.
So issue four, thank you. What we ran into, it seemed like last year with the, the fire issue, there wasn't enough education, wasn't enough opportunities, if you will. People rushed to conclusions. We all know what happened. I'm grateful for council, number one, for offering the breakfast last week. The lunch coming up at the end, towards the middle of next month. Allowing people to come and ask questions, the Facebook. Take advantage of that stuff. I mean, that's the only way you're going to, you're going to learn what's going on with it. That's really what I got to say. Grill me. That's the big thing in education, just educate yourself. Don't come to conclusions. That's the bottom line.
It's, it's, it is the key to getting things passed. It's hard to get to people, to get to people. There's, there's fewer and fewer avenues to get, there's, there's no local newspaper anymore. We've got the repository that is not what it used to be as far as local coverage. Radio stations are, are going away. So it's, it's difficult to reach out. So education is very key.
The F A Q section on Facebook every week is a wonderful, wonderful tool for people to, to be able just to go and get, get little tidbits of information.
And I mean, kudos.
Because folks, folks ask questions.
Yeah. But kudos to the, to our administration team, everybody that puts together those F A Qs, like you're saying.
Right.
And the newsletter that goes out because I, I don't, you know, that's, that's our greatest resource for public outreach. I mean, it's, it's really, it's difficult, but we just have to keep putting it out there. Yeah. Thank you.
Interesting conclusion. I want to thank NOPEC again for, you folks for coming in and, and like I said, I'm, I'm between a rock and a hard place where I live. It's like I told John earlier today. In my town, you're either on the falls aggregate or you're option.
Well.
You don't have an option. You don't have an option. So, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
President, right?
Yeah.
Except for our present company from the repository, he does cover us pretty, pretty well. Robert and I have long history, but you know, when it comes down, he does his best in reporting the facts and I appreciate it, Robert. For all these years.
I do too. That wasn't a knock.
It wasn't, okay.
But don't take it to the person.
Okay, well, good. Just like us, I thought we can't take things personally.
Good call on that.
Just a point of, well, a horse.
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to department reports. Mayor, you want to start?
Well, yes, thank you very much. Just for our, our audience and for our council. Jason Segaty, our new economic development specialist, he'll be joining the North Canton Chamber at the barrel room this February the twenty seventh from four thirty to six thirty. So talking about education and information. He'll be there to answer, have discussion or dialogue with anyone who wants to come regarding economic development in the city. I'm sure issue four may even come up about that. Just a final note, it's a historical moment for the city. In my research, again, arriving in eighteen oh five were the first German settlers for North Canton or New Berlin. And the first village plat was actually February nineteenth, eighteen thirty one. A hundred ninety four years ago, when the first village plat was filed. And then, of course, as World War One came to fruition, January thirtieth, nineteen eighteen, New Berlin became citizens of North Canton. And again, in January one, nineteen sixty two, became chartered city of North Canton. But I just thought the date of February the nineteenth, which was just on our left shoulder here, was significant, that it's hard to believe this little town right here is a hundred and ninety four years old. So that's my report.
Thanks, Morgan. Thank you. That was good. Let's go, Gina.
The finance department has started the audit process for twenty twenty four. We have the same auditors as previous years. The state has allowed us to be out for two more years. They just don't have enough staff to take us back on. So we're out for this year as well. And we're hoping to finish up a little sooner than right at the deadline. We've asked if we could be finished by the end of April and May rather than May and June. So hopefully we'll stay on that track. Do you know how it goes?
Thank you. Catherine?
Thank you, President. I guess I just have a couple of things to share. I was really honored last week. I got to serve on a panel with two other really great women in the community. It was considered women working in public and government. It was Women's Impact Group, was held at Walters. And it was with Judge Michelle Cordova and the former mayor of Massillon, Kathy Cattis, Errol Perry. And it was just really an honor to get to, to talk and I got to represent North Canton. And everybody talked about their journeys to where they are now, to their communities and how people can get involved. And because it was held at Walters, we kind of were like show of hands, who's here? And it was practically all North Canton. So I was speaking to our people and it was really great to have some young women come up and say they're really interested in learning more about local government. They want to get involved. They want to know how. They were saying, can, are there boards or commissions that we can join? Absolutely, we always have. We always have a need. I explained to them that people are already on these seats, but when they expire, we might be able to get a list going. It also sparked something telling, you know, Ben over here, you know, like something he's wanted to do. Maybe, maybe we'll explore. We just never have all the time for all things. We want to do something like a resident academy. You know, something like that where we do, you know, when you find this new generation of people saying, I want to know how it works. And, you know, I got to say, one of the things that came up was they read what's on the sites. And they said they never know what to read or to believe. Is this true? Is this not true? And, you know, I, so that's where this education may, you know, really be great. So, yeah, just wanted to say that that was a great event to, to be, you know, with these two women. Michelle Cordova was, you know, she was a juvenile prosecutor for many years and now she's a judge. And Kathy was the first female mayor for the city of Massillon and she served, you know, two terms. Yeah, so. Other than that, Ben and I will be heading to O C M A, heading to Columbus Wednesday. We'll be out for the rest of the week.
Tell them what.
If you need us, get us tomorrow. Ohio City Managers Association.
Thank you.
That's where we'll be. Thanks.
Nice. Thank you. That's awesome. Ben?
Drilling for our new water well started today. If you all remember. Can't remember name.
Amelia Sykes.
Thank you. Was down here and gave us our big check for the federal portion of that project. We also have money from the state through O P W C that is helping us. So they've started phase one, which is drilling more than seven hundred feet down into the earth to find water. And they have promised they will be done by the time golf starts at airhead.
They better be.
Also in the water world, our clarifier repainting project started. It's winter, which is our lower usage time, so it's the best time to shut down clarifiers and have them repainted. So that project has also started. Main Street Repaving, you all just approved the bid for that is set for this summer. And I know Rob was here while I was sick and talked about that, but he asked me to just, you know, once again, remind everyone that Main Street will be traffic this summer while it's being paved. And then finally, our R F P for the H V A C system at City Hall and some related renovations went live. We who work at City Hall are very excited for that project, given that an air handler died just last week. And it was fifty two degrees in Rob's office. So we are very excited for the H V A C to finally be replaced. Mark?
Does Rob want to move back here?
Probably.
Thanks, Ben. Liam?
Uh huh. Nothing this week.
Brendan, I see you over there. I mean. Nothing. No, nothing. All right. It's good to have you here. Let's go to council reports. We'll start with David.
So we've had a couple of conversations about education and as, as chairperson, personnel and safety. It's my honor to recognize that on two twenty four of this year, Sergeant Matthew Buzzard completed his Masters of Science in Criminal Justice and Justice Administration. Congratulations. That is my report. Don't want to step on that one.
Congrats to Officer Buzzard. That's awesome. Melissa?
No report.
John?
Well, I'll keep it short. We had, Matt and I hosted a coffee with council. Four or five people come in and gave us some good, good questions. We were able to answer them. They gave us a few suggestions. I think Matt and you have a couple of those that we'll pass along. Also on Saturday, the chamber, I think it was the, no, Rotary, threw the chili open. Many of us were there. The mayor, he really worked hard, but he's proud of it. You know, our mayor, he's at everything.
Yes.
He is at everything and he's always not afraid to chip in and go, he goes at it. But thank you for that, mayor. I answered a lot of questions there. There were a lot of North Cantonians. And then I got a couple of emails this week and we handled most of the problems. Liam's going to look into the one. And other than that, we've got something scheduled. We'll schedule it tomorrow in March for lunch with the councilman. Dave, myself and Matt will, will be there at Walters. So that's all I got to report today.
All right. Thanks, John. Stephanie?
No report.
All right, Christina?
Just quickly, we had a parks meeting. Brian Hill and Steve Shank and Danielle Swinhardt and Catherine and I came together. We do this, I don't know, is it every month, Catherine?
Uh huh.
Is it every month? Okay. And Catherine took us through her draft of the R F P for the Parks Master Plan. So that is well on its way to being completed and going out. And then we'll have more to report. That's it.
My turn. I, yeah, I wanted to remind everybody that it was initially announced issue three, but they came back and it is issue four. So that will be our levy on the ballot, issue four.
Board of Elections.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were some, with the recent changes in state law for numbering issues.
Back, yeah. Yeah, so that's good. Was not the city's fault. It's pushed by the state, actually, so. And then, yeah, we do have lunch planned tentatively for March thirty first, or March twenty first at eleven thirty, but we'll, we'll make more announcements as that goes. Final call for new business? None. I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing sale property at competitive bidding as determined by O R C one twenty one, twenty two G two. And Liam, if you could do a little call.
Yep. Number Wyatt?
Yes.
Number Owen?
Yes.
Remember Cleaster is absent. Remember Shroya?
Yes.
Remember Warren?
Yes.
Remember Athenee?
Yes.
Remember Orr?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed?
All right, at this time, council is in executive session. Let the record reflect that we will be joined by the directors of administration, the directors of finance and the clerk of council.
Law director and the mayor.
Yes, law director and the mayor. I crossed all that out right there. You started across the room and I just. We would like the mayor and the law director. We would like the Mayor and the Law Director.
Let the record reflect that no action was taken. Looking at the calendar, we'll have a committee of the whole on March 3rd, public hearing on ordinances one and two, 2025, on March 10th, and then a regular council meeting. And then March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, I believe, right? It's a committee of the whole, and then we do not have meeting on the 24th?
Spring break.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. Spring break on the 24th, and then a regular council meeting on the 31st.